If everybody could come in and find a seat, we're ready to call the commission meeting to order. So if everybody could come in from the back of the room and find a seat, then we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And with that, if we could stand, and we're going to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Did not expect this.
There's plenty of seats in the middle. If everybody would have a seat so that the entrances and exits are not congested in case we do need to leave rapidly.
Which happens a lot.
I got my door clear.
Yeah, one, two. The rest are on your own.
Okay, the first item will be the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners reviewed the agenda?
I have.
Any additions?
No.
I would like to remove item G from the consent agenda and put it in items for commission action.
And I have a concern about item F.
Okay, you want to move item F into?
Yes.
Okay, so item F and item G will be moved into items for commission action. There's no other changes, then ready for a motion?
To approve the consent agenda?
First, we'll approve the whole agenda with modifications, then...
Okay.
I missed the consent agenda last time. Then we'll go and approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I move that we approve the agenda as modified.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, I'll entertain a motion concerning the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item F and G.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public hearings. Item A, a public hearing to consider condemnation of 905 West Sycamore Street. I'll open the hearing, and City, Don?
We had a chance to speak last week and this week with the owner. Since that picture's been taken, new windows have been put in, cleaned up, they're mowing it regularly. Her plan is, they have a ranch in Wyoming that they're working right now. Their plan is to come in near the end of September and work on it while they're down here. I'm happy with the work that they've done so far. They're showing efforts in good faith to do that, to repair that, so I would like to adjourn for 60 days or the closest commission meeting to 60 days to reconsider condemnation on 905 West Sycamore Street.
Okay, is a property owner present tonight?
They're in Wyoming, but she did write a letter to the effect that, you know, they have done certain things and that they'll be here at the end of September to start working on this.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission concerning the property? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and commission, open it for commission discussion. Do you have any?
Sounds good to me. If they're willing to rehab the house, that would be great.
Yeah, they are. That was certainly their intent when they bought it, certainly their intent now, and they have spent quite a bit of money and are making efforts to having it mowed at least twice a month to try to maintain it.
Have they given you a schedule other than when they get here in September?
No, they'll do that when, we'll get together when they get here in September and we'll work that, work out that schedule with them.
Okay, and what was your recommendation on?
60 days.
60 days?
Or the commission meeting is close to six, that is as close as...
Okay, so that would give them adequate time to work out?
Yep, yeah, yeah. I think they could get pretty close within 60 days, so.
Okay.
Maybe even be done. So, I know that they've contacted a local electric company to look through the electrical and get the power on and so forth, so.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing until October 24th.
I'll second.
2018.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider condemnation of 221 South 15th, and I will open the public hearing.
Previously, we had spoke to them about the condition of the property. They said that they wanted to have a chance to work on this over the July 4th weekend, to work on the front porch, that's where they wanted to start working first. That came and went. It's been two months since then, they've not had a chance to do or done anything on the property. I visited with them this week. They said that to go ahead and proceed with what we want to do with the property, which is move towards condemnation. Made them aware of the time and date of the meeting by letter and by personal visit. I'm not, do not see them here this evening. So it is our recommendation that we proceed with condemnation of 200, excuse me, 221 South 15th Street.
You indicated that they were okay with us moving forward with condemnation. Does that mean they're giving up, they're not?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what she told me when I visited with her. I explained to her that that still meant that there's a period of time that they can continue to...
Right.
To work on the property if they so choose to do so.
So there, is there a representative from the owner present? If there's no representative, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission concerning 221 South 15th? With that, I'll close the public hearing, commission discussion. Any more?
No.
None here, Tom.
If there's no further discussion from the commission, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to, go ahead and...
I move that 221 South 15th Street be condemned as dangerous and insane.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we'll go back to item F of the consent agenda, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the city to tow abandoned, non-registered, junk, wrecked, or incapable of moving vehicles.
Yes, sir.
I would, and I think Jeff can concur with this, this is not our intent to just go out and take vehicles, move them or anything. The issue has come to the front because we've recently had an abandoned vehicle on some property, and that property owner does not, it's one of the out-of-state property owners, and there was no way to move the vehicle. Other issues we are having is, we go out and do an environmental on an untagged, abandoned type of a vehicle in a yard, and there's a process we go through in the environmentals where we send them a certified letter. If they don't respond, we then send it over to the court. Court system issues a long form, is it Jeff called, that the police officers then attempt to serve, which would then basically a subpoena to come to court in front of the municipal judge. They won't answer the door, they avoid the officers, so it isn't, most people respond, Commissioner, and are very good when we work with them, but there are a few. And then we ran into a recent issue where Jerry doesn't feel our code is even adequate when a car is illegally parked on the street, that gives him the authority to tow that vehicle. So, and Jerry's not here tonight, but this will also, and Jeff can relate to that, allow him to, after, I believe you guys mark it and it's 48 hours, Jason? 72 hours after they mark a car and notice somebody, and this would allow them then to move a car that's parked that needs to be removed, so. But I stress, it's not our intent to tow vehicles or just when we have to, and I think even Jeff cautioned us on that when we wrote the ordinance.
That was one of the questions I had.
Yes.
How aggressive we were going to proceed this policy.
Right.
What we're doing now, are we having, is this a big issue that we're facing, the city's facing?
I don't, Kelly can tell you, we receive, and you guys probably get calls and emails all the time, similar to like these pictures up here, of illegally parked vehicles, abandoned vehicles. As I say, most people respond to our letters that we send out and are very good to work with. However, there are a few that we get to the place where there's just nothing happening and something needs to happen.
In the photograph here, you're talking about like the RV parked on the wrong side of the street?
Yes, this, yeah, this was, it's on the wrong side of the street, and I think there's that city ordinance that an RV can only be, is it 48 hours, Kelly?
I think it's 72 hours.
72 hours parked in the street. It has to then be placed, as the ordinance says, backside the house.
What about the boat?
The boat is also illegally there, and Jerry's working with this concerned citizen on this issue.
So how does, the ordinance doesn't address the boat, then, does it?
Jeff?
No. I don't think it, this was just for vehicles. There was a gap, there's a state statute that the Hollywood Patrol utilizes, if you're on like a state highway, they can tow it 48 hours because it's considered a higher risk to public safety because of higher speeds.
Right.
And of course, cities don't have the equivalent, and our statute has kind of a protection for an owner with a temporarily disabled vehicle. They can be temporarily disabled for up to 30 days in good faith, but, and our ordinance requires notice. I mean, next door office within a block, there's one or two vehicles that have been parked in streets there. The tires are flat and the windows are caved in, and they've been there for over a year, and there's really no ordinance that covers those. I mean, that's not what prompted this, it was actually a different scenario that prompted this, but this was more motor vehicles.
What you're saying, if somebody is experiencing car trouble and it breaks down and they call and notify the police department that they have a problem, and within 30 days they get it repaired, then that's not a towing issue?
Exactly, and I think Jeff stressed that to me from the start, you know, we want to give these people plenty of chances, you know, he stressed, you know, 30 days, doing every effort we can to give them notice before we tow the vehicle.
So you're, I can see where you have an out-of-state owner, stuff can accumulate that can make it difficult...
Yeah.
...to address as...
And you call these people?
Environmentals, yeah.
Yeah, and they're like, I'm not there, they don't want it there, but, you know, they don't want to take the responsibility of removing it.
Right.
So there it just sits, we're just in a limbo.
Okay.
There was something there, I'm trying, I'm trying to find it here, and it had to do with vehicles being enclosed either in a building or contained in a building if they were on the premise, and I've seen some cities that I've passed through, smaller cities, where people, they've put up one of these metal carports, and then they've covered the vehicle and they've kept it, they've kept it in the yard, but they've kept it covered with a roof over it, but it wasn't an enclosed building, by no means.
They already have a section that, in the same area, that says, this scenario does not apply to a vehicle that is behind, I'll just read it to you, screening of sufficient size, strength, and density to screen the vehicle from the view of the public, and that's what it says, so.
And that's more for an untagged vehicle, isn't it? If it's registered and tagged, then that's not an issue for...
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
I've noticed a vehicle I go by often and it's blocking the sidewalk, and I don't think it's been moved in five years, and it seems a little odd to me that we've spent all this money making the sidewalk ADA compliant, but we're blocking it with a vehicle, is that?
That is, and if, Jason, the car that blocks in their drive, the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Yeah, so that would be an officer could handle that.
Okay.
Just tell us where.
I will point it out to you.
Okay, we will deal with it.
Okay, that, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that we were...
Yes, we will...
We're not going to be aggressive looking for...
No, sir.
For this.
Sure do that, thanks.
Okay, if there's no other, no other questions, I'll call for a motion.
Okay. I move to adopt ordinance, what number is this?
There's two of them, actually.
4276 and 4277.
Okay, 4276, can I do both in one?
Yes.
4276 and 4277, authorizing the city to tow an impairment of vehicles, excuse me.
And charge fees.
And charge fees.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item from the consent agenda is item G, consider supplemental agreement with PEC for surveying services. Terry?
Yes.
The project that's going out to bid is electrical in nature.
Yes.
Why do we need a topo survey for that?
That is, the reason for the survey is the next segment of getting started on the next segment of the project. The ADA survey that was done out there, they determined that we do need to do ADA accessibility to the building because we open it for tourists and the public entrance into the building, entrance and egress, so we need to do some surveying to determine what we can do to address ADA issues, parking, entrance to the building and that stuff.
Why, why would we separate the survey from the contract to design ADA issues? They're doing preliminary, they don't need to go to the working drawing, and they don't, to do the working drawing, we need to do another contract with them, and their fee for doing a survey, a topo study for that area is extremely high.
I don't disagree with you on that.
We got a local surveying company that if we need a topo, I think we should be contacting them to provide, because they've got, they've got boundary information and already tied in to that area, but, you know, I think the, the survey, if it related to electrical, they should have had that in their initial proposal, and...
It doesn't relate to electrical, like I say, it relates to the next phase of this and getting started on that so we can try and get ahead of that curve, but I don't disagree with you on the cost, I thought it was extremely high myself.
And, you know, when we look back, this was in June, and we interviewed, you know, we were, I thought, discussed pretty seriously about getting the electrical addressed and out to bid, and it's been a year, and the electrical doesn't take that long to design, and if they take a year on something this simple, you know, I hesitate to consider giving them a contract to do the ADA, particularly with looking at $11,000 for a survey. And, you know, and with, and even whether we continue with them or not, I think if Cornerstone can provide the services, then I'd like to see them do the survey and us use it for, for any consultant.
Would you like us to have Cornerstone give us a quote on doing that work? I don't know if it's necessary at this point, I mean, but at some point, we're going to have to.
Right. I don't, Commissioners, what's your opinion on?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, why don't we, when it comes time for us to do that, why don't we look at it, that at that time?
We can get a quote, but not issue it or review.
Okay, so I'll have a quote of surprise to do that work, and we can look at it.
So one thing, we, when we do the survey, you know, we're, somewhere we discussed about the, the building for the chloride, have to separate into a separate building?
We have looked at that. Those costs were, they did some preliminary cost estimates on building, a separate building for chlorine, and it was very pricey.
Yeah, when we do a survey, we would want to include all the information in the topo to be necessary to construct that building, so we have one survey with all the data, and if we knew where it was going to go, that could all be included at one time instead of coming back.
That was, that was the other issue with locating that building and having access for semi-trucks. We just, you can't figure out where to put it.
That's, that's why I was thinking with that area there, you know, are you going to look at the chlorine building farther west where it's flatter? You got some easier drives than coming down East Oak Street, so, you know, I think you're going to need the topo when you do that building, so include enough area that we only do one survey.
Okay. When we first talked about this, I thought the survey was going to include the whole area to the north end of the basins and everything, but it's pretty limited.
For that amount of money, I would have thought that too.
Yeah.
Plus the oval and Rancho.
The rest of the park and...
Yeah. Okay, well, then, for this, we'll... Jeff, is it better to formally take a vote and reject the proposal, or just through our discussion, we've done that?
I think if you take no action, that's a negative vote in essence.
Okay, then, if the commission is in agreement, we'll take no action on this item?
In agreement.
Thank you. Items for commission action. Thank you, Terry. Consider setting the date for a public hearing to consider condemnation of apartment complex at 1701 North 10th Street on October 24th, 2018 at 5:30.
So this would be one building at that complex, so there was a...
Do you, do you consider that one structure that even what's not...
Yes, yes.
Or just...
To condemn all of it, because there's water damage in that, that other, we'll talk with them about trying to put people back in those other units. As explained, there's, there's no feasible way right now to get electricity to that, plus the interior wall that's now exposed is acting as an exterior wall, which can't be. So we've said it's our preference that we just condemn the whole building. Their adjuster's been out, an engineer's been out, I'm waiting for a copy of the engineer's report, and they do plan on rebuilding that and redoing it, but we told them that we don't want to have anybody in that building in the foreseeable future till it gets repaired. And the person that I'm working with, with the company seems to be in agreement with that, that we probably want to hold off getting anybody in that building till it's completed.
Does the building have a unit number or some identification specific?
Yes, it does.
Building four?
Yeah, it is, I believe it's building four.
And we can't move any faster than that?
What's that?
For the public hearing?
I'm...
Wait two months, two full months?
Well, they're, they're not going to have anybody in that, in that building, that's the normal time, that's the normal timeframe for, for this, for the procedure, so that's, that's what we went with. This is, I believe, building four.
Seems like a bit of a dangerous situation to have that sitting there all that time.
Yeah, they've started to board that up, and...
It'd take a lot of boarding.
Yes.
Well, are they going to go ahead and raise the fire damaged part and just secure the building?
That's what he's not sure, he's waiting for the engineer's report. There's one school of thought with the engineers maybe leaving part of that structure that was fire damaged, so I'm waiting for the engineer's report to see what he says about that.
What might be possible is go ahead and consider this date pending on the structural engineer's report, and if it is an issue, Don could bring it back and we could act on an emergency.
Yes.
Because, you know, once a fire investigation is done, I think they would want to start raising this, this portion...
Yeah, right away.
And then secure...
Yeah.
What would be salvageable.
Right, so, that was part of, that was one of my questions, but according to the engineer, he feels like there's enough structural integrity that maybe they could build from that, so I'm waiting to see what his report says.
It was originally an eight-plex, wasn't it?
Yes.
And it burned to the fire separation between the two four-plexes?
Yes, it is, but the electrical's on the west side with the wires running, feeding the other apartments through the top, so that's one of my, that's just one of my many concerns about trying to get somebody in there before, it's totally...
Yeah, depending how they rerouted the electric, but the fire was limited to the west section of four-plexes.
Yes, but there's water damage.
Water damage.
There's water damage in two of the units on the other side.
So probably that's...
And there will be water damage now because that wall is an interior wall, it's not meant to stop water from coming in.
But as far as structural damage on the four-plex to the east, it's...
No.
Probably unlikely.
Probably, it probably, there isn't very much damage over there structurally, no.
Okay. So would you want to have a report as soon as?
Yeah, if we know something ahead of that, I mean, I'm fine with this motion, I just, I hate to let it sit there like that for six months.
One of the considerations is condemnation, if we condemn the building, we kind of limit them financially as to some...
Because, you know, once a fire investigation is done, I, I think they would want to start raising this, this portion.
Yeah, right away.
And then secure.
Yeah.
What would be salvageable.
Right. So that was part of, one of, that was one of my questions, but according to the engineer, he feels like there's enough struc- structural integrity that maybe they could build from that. So I'm waiting to see what his report says.
It was originally an eightplex, wasn't it?
Yes.
And it burned to the fire separation between the two fourplexes.
Yes, it is. But the electrical's on the west side with the wires running, feeding the other apartments through the top. So, um, that's one of my, that's just one of my many concerns about trying to get somebody in there before it's totally.
Yeah, depending how they rerouted the electric, but, um, the fire was limited to the west section of fourplex.
Yes, but there's water damage.
Water damage.
There's water damage in two of the units on the other side.
So probably that's.
And there will be water damage now because that wall is an interior wall. It's not meant to stop water from coming in.
But as far as structural damage on the fourplex to the east, it's?
No.
Probably unlikely.
Probably, it probably isn't, there isn't very much damage over there structurally, no.
Okay. So would you want to have a, a report as soon as?
Yeah, if we know something ahead of that. I mean, I'm fine with this motion. I just, I hate to let it sit there like that.
One of the considerations is condemnation. If we condemn the building, we kind of limit them financially as to some options that they might need to take for finances.
Okay, good to know.
But then we need to protect the community that it doesn't sit there like that.
Yes.
That's what your concern is.
Right. But I think it's, it's their intent, they do have insurance on it and their intent is to get people back in there, so.
Okay. Questions? If there's no other questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to set the date of October 24th, 2018 for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the fire damaged complex located at 1701 North 10th Street.
Building four.
Building four.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Don. Next item, consider approving the 2018 ADA final design and permission to have Trans Systems bid the project.
Mary, I'll kind of let you lead the discussion where you want to go. Uh, I will bring to your attention that we've had a recent complaint on Fifth Street and with a wheelchair and accessibility to his job.
Right.
That we've kind of added into this. But, uh, we've kind of went through this and Sean's here, so that's probably who you may have questions for. Let you kind of lead, you guys lead the discussion of, uh... I mean, same project. And, uh, we, uh, how do you want to, you just want me to go back through it again?
No, I don't think we need to go through it all, do you?
I don't think so.
Do you want to go through it again? Like maybe just specific questions?
Yeah.
I noticed that the, uh, cost estimates stayed pretty much in line with your first estimates, except at the, at the park. When we talked about it, it looks like we're extending some of the, the work over on Fifth Street to some sidewalks.
Right, to the paving.
Yes, uh, the, the plan is, have you redone Fifth Street yet on paving?
It starts.
It started, yes.
We're trying to get ahead of that on some ADA issues. Uh, there was some kind of quirky, uh, parking in that area. The way the parking lot was designed, the, it appeared that a sidewalk ended at Fifth Street, so we're going to modify that so it doesn't look like there's a sidewalk.
Page 17.
Is that the right one?
Yeah. So I didn't see a modification for this addition on your price.
Yeah, that, that, we did not include any additional, um, but in the overall total, I believe that's going to fit. We had some contingency money, uh, in our unit prices that we don't think were going to be, uh, over budget.
Are you sure enough that it doesn't need to be an alternate in case you go over?
We can certainly bid it that way. Um, we can bid any portion of it that way, really, make an alternate package.
Yeah, because I know we had only budgeted, you know, had in our budget $180,000 even though we had more money in the ADA special use sales tax.
It's, it's really not a problem at all to package that into an alternate in the bid package. That's your, that's your leisure, really.
With the, the sidewalk replacement, um, how's that tied in with the concrete parking then? Is it a standing curb that the concrete parking port up against it?
Yes, it is.
It looks kind of...
Yes, it is now. And, uh, it is now. And we, we have kicked around some different options there and we think we can probably do one also, bid us an alternate, the two different options, where we do, don't do nearest much replacement, just add some, uh, add a couple of ramps and modify parking, um, instead of just a total replacement.
So what were you accomplishing by taking out the whole sidewalk?
Yeah, if we do, the, option one, if we lower the entire sidewalk, then, then we're ADA compliant. But option two, where we go in and just fix the parking spots, remove the sections of the sidewalk touching Fifth Street, that's a much more economical solution. And, uh, um, I think that'll, that will also be ADA compliant.
Yeah, because the sidewalks touching Fifth Street look like they were more intended for a handicap ramp or just to give you someplace to step out so you don't walk into the, the grass from your car because there's no sidewalk across.
Right.
On the west side.
Right.
So it would be redundant to put a ramp there that if you're going to take it out to lower it to the level.
That, that's exactly what we thought. Just, just remove, remove that sidewalk, build it level with the parking, parking area, uh, and, uh, not have a ramp then across, crossing Fifth Streets. So we can, we can certainly do that, have a couple of different options on that Fifth Street, bid us alternates.
Yeah. It looks like to take the whole east sidewalk, the north-south sidewalk with it removing and leaving the parking. If it's a standing curb with the parking port up against it, you can start damaging and get into a lot more work than what's anticipated. If we can, of course, keep the work to a minimum, then we got more money to do something else with and...
Certainly, certainly. We, we'll, we'll put our package, final package together that way where we have a couple of alternates on Fifth Street.
Okay. The last section of, uh, item seven, there wasn't any estimates for those, so how does...
Go ahead, Mary.
How does that work into your total project cost? Is it?
I think Sean and I and Craig and Mike spoke and we're hopeful that when the package goes out, it's a big enough package that what we're estimating now, and Sean can speak to this, we've estimated on the high side that we're going to have enough money to cover these. These are complaints that have come in that I've given to Sean.
Yeah, every one of those is, is what I call a simple ramp. So we're really still under the situation where we think just contingency money we had in our original estimate, we'll be able to cover that.
Okay, so they're, they're not whole intersections?
Correct.
They're just a, an incident of, of one?
Right, the only one that is the Fifth Street complaint that we just received last week, which may be a little 50 to 75,000.
That, most recent complaint is a significant, uh, project. But the others were just very simple fixes.
So are you looking at an accessible route from his residence to work?
I met with him last Saturday and, uh, he's pretty much not driving a lot anymore. He's pretty much in the wheelchair and he's going across Pine, wants to go across Pine and get on the, uh, west side and go all the way up to Myrtle Street where his work is.
How much?
There's a, that's a pretty steep area and a lot of the driveways in that area impact the sidewalk to make it accessible. So there's going to have to be a number of driveway replacements along that route.
That's why I wondered if you've looked at the whole route from house that you're going to have to eliminate any offset greater than a half inch.
We could stay on the east side, Leonard, and go up to Westminster and then bring him back across because we have some of the ramps on, south of there already in place. But there's still a few obstacles between Locust and Myrtle. We have a tree that has buckled the sidewalk in the middle in a place where minus a couple ramps, but they're simple ramps.
Yeah, just as long as we, we're going to have to address the whole route.
Right, yes. Yep.
Yeah, that, that one is a, is an expensive complaint to address, but it's also, I feel it's pretty necessary. A, a pathway that would be used, is currently being used, so.
Yeah, so that would put us up over 600,000.
We're, like I say, we're hopeful that when we come back with a bid package for you, we stay close to where we're at.
And that's another one, uh, certainly at the commission's leisure, but it could be bid us an alternate very easily.
Well, you know, for that one, I think that should be in the package.
Yeah.
The others.
Yeah, we may want to, when we bring the package back, you guys may make some choices.
In fact, yeah, we can, we can put the, we can package it up where there's a pretty reasonably priced base bid and then maybe 10th Street. And then the rest of the whole entire thing is alternate after that.
Just be sure we look at the whole route that.
Yes.
You know, we're not just doing ramps and then we miss.
Exactly.
Roots, we miss.
Right.
Settled sections of, or spalled.
Yeah, that was his concern. He told me where he was being forced back out into the street and...
With him being in a motorized car, he's not going to probably be as limited on crossing a street.
Right.
But still, the accessible route is.
Correct.
Pretty determined.
Yes.
Okay, that was a question on, on Chestnut. The sidewalk adjacent to Annie Mays?
Yes.
Number 14. We're looking at, at that section as, as an accessible route, right?
Yes, and yes, and that's...
It's not under sidewalk maintenance.
Tom had a good point and it probably took him a little bit to get through my stubborn head, but it's an accessible route. And after visiting with Craig.
Yeah.
That, yeah, it's on us to take care of that.
Since DOJ mandated that our public site, our parking lots.
Yes.
Would be accessible and then that includes taking them to the downtown.
Correct. And as I told Craig, that, there was a complaint from a gentleman at Neo Walla that brought this about.
Somebody fell one year even.
Yes, correct.
From the planters.
Yes.
The, uh, that little strip in the middle, is that grass?
Yes, there, it is right now. It is grass.
Okay.
Um, and we've discussed a number of iterations on, uh, various things that could be done there. The reason we put grass is that, you know, the sidewalk adjacent to the curb is lower than the sidewalk to the build, next to the building. So putting the strip of grass provides the barrier where we don't have to do a handrail. If we pave all that, we just need to add the handrail cost as well. So, um, I'm not saying that's not a better way to do it. It's just, uh, that's just was why we've done it the way we've done it. It's the, the less cost approach to it.
Grass is such a maintenance issue there and erosion is, an 18-inch-high wall wouldn't serve as an adequate barrier, would it?
I, I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I still think there has to be a handrail on top of that.
Yeah, because it depends on the, what's the height difference between the lower sidewalk and the upper sidewalk?
It varies, but I believe at the ramp, we're right, we're very close to two feet at the ramp location and unless you head in each direction, it gets less. But, uh, yeah, we, we did kick around with the property owners, you know, the possibility of paving all the way to the northernmost retaining wall and putting a handrail. It's just additional cost to do that.
Yeah. How about scraps from the ICC practice field turf when we could turf it?
There you go. There you go. Doesn't that's, I mean, again, that's a, a better but more costly, um...
No, I mean picking the scraps up at night.
The, the hand, the handrail is a better but more costly, uh, solution. We can bid it, bid it as an alternate too and if, if the commission desires.
You know, with, uh, that narrow and a two-foot grade chain, that gets pretty steep and, uh, additional mowing and... It'd be great if you just concrete it and then skateboarders.
It would be a good place.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's was my concern, you know, with the work that, uh, crews have to do in mowing and trimming, you know, if there's a economical other option.
Yeah, we can bid as an alternate. I don't know if Tom, you have any?
I just don't want the skateboarders.
He doesn't want it.
Cobblestone.
Yeah.
Okay. Originally, when we discussed the parking lot, you were talking about, uh, sealing, crack seal and then seal the surface?
Correct.
Okay. That part of the project's going to have to come out of another fund. Well, ADA won't cover sealing and...
I can check on that. I've been working with Dana at the DOJ. I, I can run that by him. He's, I sent all this to Dana and had him review it and he felt comfortable, we were good, but I can specifically ask him that question, Leonard?
As, crack seal and coating is a maintenance.
Yeah.
It's nothing to do with ADA.
Basically, we were re-changing it to get the ADA parking there and doing all that to make that happen. But let me check with Dana and when we get, come back with the, uh, final bids or the, we can then let you know if that's covered or not.
The striping I could see.
Right.
That is ADA, but if it's not directly to accessibility.
And it may be the...
Our accountability of our funds, we're not looking at a lot of money.
Right.
For the coating, but for correct administration of our funds.
Correct, I agree with you. And that, we will definitely verify that.
Just make sure we get the breakdown to...
Yes.
I think that was the only... Questions, did you have any questions?
No, uh, the, uh, the bid package that we had looked at was in the vicinity of $582,000. So the projects that we're looking at, we're going to try to keep within that.
Yes.
That dollar amount and then pick and choose.
Right, we'll set with, down with David, kind of package things up with a base bid and some alternates. Make sure at least our base bid with the, all the add-ons is going to be under that. But I'm, I'm pretty comfortable, except with the most recent complaint that we're going to, we're going to be under that, uh, that dollar amount.
Any further questions?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
No, thank you. Or no?
If there's no questions, then I'll call for a motion.
So we want to approve the design and, uh, give permission to bid the project basically?
Okay.
So I move we approve the 2018 ADA final design and give permission to Trans Systems to bid the project?
Have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Excuse me.
I did a contract with the Church for Improvements ADA.
That's right.
Isn't, and that you might need to...
We do.
They've signed it. You might need to approve the contract.
Okay, we'll back up to item C. There is a contract agreeing with, uh, the Church of God for work on their property and sharing some expenses.
Got that, Dave.
Did the commissioners have any questions regarding that, that agreement? Then if we have no questions, I'll call for a motion on the agreement.
I make a motion that, um, we proceed with the, what is that? Contract for the address?
1400 Irving Street.
1400 Irving Street?
With the Church of God.
With the Church of God.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Jeff. Next item on the agenda is consider authorizing a branded aviation dealer agreement with Phillips for aviation fuel sales and acceptance of a grant for upgrading the fuel farm. Mike?
I have Bruce Yatsi with Phillips 66.
I have Bruce Yautsey with Phillips sixty-six, and he can get, tell you a little bit about it and answer maybe some of the questions you might have.
Bruce, what's your last name?
Yeah, my name is Bruce Yautsey.
Y-O-U-T-S-E-Y. I'm with Phillips sixty-six Aviation.
And, you know, first off, Phillips sixty-six thanks the city of Independence for the years of partnership. This marks thirty years that we've been together, and over those years Phillips has continued to provide quick support on quality issues or pointing out or helping with to make sure, or at least educate, to make sure that, uh, the quality control, which is most important, and, and that, uh, you know, helping out the, the crew out at the airport. And then so, and most recently, we identified the, the ab gas or the hundred low lead tank, which is just an old, old oilfield tank and steel piping, that it's in the best interest of the city to replace that. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's just something that's waiting to happen, that there's going to be an issue. And it's very important that the city does things, at least on par, to make sure we keep Cessna happy. And, and we're fully aware of that, and we enjoy Textron business also, not only here but in Wichita. So we're very forward with helping on the quality control side and answering any questions for the, you know, the crew out at the airport. And so what we've identified and under Cody's leadership is we've moved forward on, on identifying a replacement for the hundred low lead. And, and then with our partnership for thirty years, Phillips sixty-six is stepping up to do a grant offering of eighty thousand dollars to assist in that. We value, we appreciate and value your business here, and, and so through the ten-year agreement, basically, it's, it's business as usual, and at the end of the ten years, uh, given the volume commitments met, then the grant just vapor, or goes away. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a program we offer, of one of many. So helping dealers and to do upgrades of this nature, and, and so, uh.
So the, the upgrade, how many tanks first educated? So how many tanks we've got?
Well, you have two, you have two tanks now. You've got one jet tank and you've got one ab gas tank. And, and, and while both of them, I mean, we'll just, we'll just talk about the ab gas tank. It's, it's an oil, oilfield tank, basically. It's, we, we, I have, we've never looked in it, but I'm sure that there's rust in, inside. You've got steel piping, uh, the, the filter, the filtration to the wing of the aircraft is old. All of that needs to be replaced, and that's what we've worked with, with Cody on, on getting the right design.
And that's a single wall?
Yes, sir.
And the new tanks, are they double walled stainless steel?
But, you know, it'll be a double walled, uh, steel tank. It's a horizontal, and I don't have the specs with me, but Cody would have those from, uh, from the Hoydale company. And, and so, and then it's stainless steel piping.
Stainless steel piping.
Piping, and a new pump and the, and, and the most current filtration to make sure we have clean, dry fuel to the wing, so.
The documentation we're looking at says it is a stainless steel tank.
Okay.
You sound like you're not quite sure.
Stainless steel takes good. I, I don't have the.
That's what I thought.
Front of me. Okay. Is it stainless steel? Twelve thousand gallon horizontal above ground double walled tank, eight by thirty-two with sump interior epoxy line primer. I don't see whether it's stainless steel, but it, it could be. I don't, I don't know that they, I mean, they make them, but I don't know that, that this one is. It doesn't state here.
Right.
So, and it's not needed. I mean, every, every, or most, most all tanks out there in the fuel farms are a double walled steel with epoxy liner, and we've set many. I mean, I haven't, but, but dealers have that we've assisted them. And, uh, I was just out at Scotts Bluff, Nebraska last week where they just set one, so. It'll, it'd be thirty years from now, maintained right, which they will. You know, you'll have the state of the art system for a long time to come, and that's, you know, this is a, a good time to, to get that because of the, the KDOT grant offer and, and with, with, and then Phillips sixty-six support.
What's the, the jet fuel tank out there now? Is it just steel epoxy coated?
I presume so. It's, it's the same style of tank, but in the view of, of, uh, and looking on the quality control, the, um, the, um, the ab gas tank is most one that needs to be looked at. The, the jet fuel's got a, got a, um, a good filtration system on it, colodiscent separator with a field water defense. I mean, ideally, if you had the money, let's do both, but, but that's, that's a costly. And if, if we look at the, the, the lesser, or the, the evil one, and it'd be the ab gas, because that's what is the most prominent for the business on the field.
We would consider a larger grant, too.
Indeed.
Yeah, we wouldn't refuse it.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, it, yeah, it's, the jet fuels, it will be okay. The ab gas is the one that our quality control guys are really like, please, let's see if we can get.
Right.
Because we've worked with, with the city for many years now on, on control, quality control issues. And not that they were doing wrong, but it's always giving the, the guidance and where there's questions, and so this was identified. And so that's where, I mean, with, with, uh, with the renewal coming up was, is just perfect timing for, for us, I mean Phillips.
Now, the word branding or branded has been mentioned. Currently, is it branded or is this something you want to move into?
Thirty years we've been branded with, with, with the city of Independence.
Okay.
So this is no change on that.
Okay.
And what branding means basically is that, that it, it carries a lot of programs that was in the proposal.
Right.
It carries fifty million dollar liability insurance to the city on behalf of Phillips. And, but what it, what requires is that the city only buys fuel from Phillips. And that's the reason we have very, the fuel pricing I gave on the jet price is very attractive for an eighty thousand dollar grant. And, and of course, our ab gas is just market price, but we produce it. So anybody else that wants to sell it to you is going to buy from us and we sell it to you. So it's always best to be direct with the refiner, which that's what Phillips sixty-six is.
So the, the part of the proposal about the, the wall sign or the pole sign, that.
It's already up there.
It's already taken care of.
Yeah, it's already there. Everything structurally or infrastructure is already there. All we're going to do is just renew and give you eighty thousand dollars and help you with the tank, and then, and then help cultivate and make sure that Textron's happy.
So all the, the credit card information, all that's already intact?
Already, already using. You bet.
So.
And then, you know, and the cities are, got the QT, QT system out there for self-serve, so you've already got that investment. I mean, and it, and it's, it's a good system. I looked at it earlier today. So, uh, it's just a matter of setting a, the new tank, getting the stainless steel piping, the new pump, new filtration, and hose and reel and nozzle, and, and you'll have, you know, everybody will be happy. And then, and everybody can sleep at night going, you know, when, when the airplane takes off, we don't have to worry about it not making it there because of the fuel we sold them.
Right.
But, but that's not here. That's every dealer I talk with. That has to be everybody that works on the line out there, that their passion needs to be what I just stated.
So for the replacement of the, the tank, we go, say we go ahead and adopt a proposal. Then do you write the specs for us, or do we need to get a consultant?
Hoydale has, has done it, and I believe you probably have this.
Okay, I haven't seen that.
Okay. Yeah, Hoydale is the, the, uh, engineering firm that.
Okay.
That, that has worked on many projects out here, and so, and they, and Phillips worked with Jared Sneed, I think it is, with, with Hoydale to make sure that the, the piping, the tank, the filtration was all, when it's installed, it's correct, and nobody has to worry about anything. And that's what we've worked with, with Hoydale on.
So the, Hoydale's the same one that does, uh, car fuel too, right?
PB Hoydale. Right, yeah. Hoydale's really stepped up. They came to a few of our training classes on QC. They've got this Jared Sneed that wants to do things correctly on the aviation side, so we've been helping them along, uh, giving them guidance on, on the correct filtration, correct filtration and, uh, other parts.
So for the whole picture then, we're talking about a, a grant if we brand, renew with a ten-year contract. But now there's already been discussion and some background on specification of tanks. And we're not going to go out to bid. Are we, are we going to go to bid for the tanks or, or the tank replacement, or is that a contract?
That, I'll let somebody else answer that one. That's outside of mine. Go.
We'd gone out for bids initially on the grant we received with the jet fuel car.
And, and that's completed?
No, no, no. That, that never, uh, progressed, made it to construction because of the problems that Phillips and the city had found.
With the jet fuel?
With the ab gas.
Okay.
We were going to replace the card reader, so this kind of balloon, once we found out the condition, uh, we'd already got, we'd already got a proposal from Hoydale, a bid, bid proposal.
For the card reader on the ab gas?
So I went back, uh, to them after we found out what we needed to do this, and this is their second proposal to us.
Okay, so you're working with Hoydale?
Directly.
Is, okay.
And, you know.
Well, I thought we had discussed the card reader before, and that's what, in some of the literature, that the card reader was not supported. And I thought we had, had just replaced it, so that's when we were going to replace it.
Right.
Because it was obsolete when you started that, then you found the problems with the tank.
With the tanks.
And now that card reader went on hold and.
Right, but we're, but the, the, uh, grant is still available to put towards this project also.
Right.
So.
And that's the funds that shown on the screen, or is that additional funds?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
We're at, right up top at thirty-five, yes, eighty-five percent. So that money's not lost by any means.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm glad we backed up on it. Come to find out, visiting with Bruce, uh, the company that had initiated this, they were supposed to, uh, have a, what was it, an air? Very few people do a, ab gas. I mean, very few companies actually require that on the field. They usually bring their own, uh, system and tanks and set up herself, so from the beginning, we were getting kind of some bad information. But the grant was already put in and approved, so it's kind of ace, ace card there in the hole, so.
What about that requested supplemental funding? Can somebody explain what that is? The next bottom line.
There.
We were, uh, since we had this grant already that we've switched over, uh, supplemental one was we thought we could, uh, extend that grant or add to that grant, uh, and so we have made application to amend that grant. We just got an email back from the state saying, no, just fill out a new form for basically additional grant for this. But they're certainly, you know, willing to entertain that, so hopefully we'll get, we'll get that grant as well.
I believe so.
Clear enough?
Yeah, that's, that is, yeah. So I, you know, I put that application in as Friday, tomorrow or first part of the week.
But it's certainly not guaranteed.
Nothing guaranteed.
But we won't lose, if we don't get the supplemental grant, we won't lose the.
No, we will not.
Initial twenty-nine, so we're looking at our investment could be as little as sixty-four hundred or forty-two thousand.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And.
Well, forty-seven, forty-eight thousand, because we've already got the city match in there for fifty-two fifty on line three. So we'd need almost forty-three more.
Right. Right. Question?
Guess not.
So our, our time schedule, it sounds, what you've explained about the ab gas, it's something we need to.
It's critical.
Yeah.
Very critical.
So what's our, our timeframe?
Well, uh.
Like on the.
There's a few things that are going to hold it up. I think we had an eight-week lead time on the tank. And then we have Cessna's end of year, and that is in December. But if, if it is approved, they could actually start doing the, the concrete work for the slab. And there's a lot of work that can be done before the tank gets here, but I think one of our biggest things is not, uh, putting Cessna out of business, out of fuel during that end of year deal, and that's what we're trying to work with now. And we haven't gone to Cessna, or Mike has, might maybe talked to him, I'm not sure, Cody. Have you visited with Cessna on the end of year thing and, and the tank installation at all?
No, I haven't, not at the moment, and I wanted to get a guarantee or something along those lines before I went.
Before we talked to them.
Yeah, because it sounds like some of the concerns would go across the board to a lot of other people other than Cessna with the quality of ab gas that we need to.
Absolutely.
Do you have to have containment pond or, or the, the fuel storage tanks large enough that you have to contain in case of a spill?
Not the double walled.
Double walled tanks?
Yeah, double tank, you didn't require, or, no containment required.
Okay.
That can just be set on, actually, you could just do footers out there, because it's, the horizontal tanks come with legs. That, you know, kind of a saddle that's already welded on it.
Yeah.
And so you.
So a flat slab.
Where they just set those on some footers and have a concrete slab up front to set the tank, I mean, the, the piping and the filter. And then you've just got rock, kind of a squared rock, a rectangle rock containment for aesthetics, basically. They don't have to mow underneath the tank then, so.
Or some artificial turf, maybe.
Some more of that scraps.
The, uh, your comment about the end of year, Cessna's end of year just went right over my head. Why, I don't understand what.
Cody should probably explain that a little bit, their fueling and.
They, uh, they do the majority of their sales at the end of each quarter.
Okay.
And especially towards the end of the year.
Okay. Calendar year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, December is not only the end of their fourth quarter, but as well as the end of the year, and that's when a lot of people decide to buy their planes for tax purposes and.
So what you're saying is we can't be without the fuel tank?
Absolutely not. Even, even though these guys have told me that during this process, we'd only be shut down for about a week, where we won't have access.
So we can't put the new one in and make it functional before we remove the old one?
That's what they're trying to do, but still nonetheless, it's going to be a week there.
Okay.
That we would be without fuel.
I see. So we want that at a slow time of year.
Yes, sir.
For everybody.
The thing is, is typically our truck, our refueling for the ab gas is twelve hundred gallons. Uh, typically, if all we're having to do is fuel out of that, then a week would be no problem. But Cessna also has their truck as well that holds three hundred gallons, and I've seen weeks before where they'd come down there and fuel it, you know, two or three times. So obviously, the twelve hundred gallon truck wouldn't be enough for us. That's why we're trying to postpone that a little bit.
I see. Thank you.
Another question?
As long as we can pay for it, I think it's a great idea.
That was the next, does the airport fund have the funds available for the project?
Uh, yeah, in a couple of areas. Um, uh, we're not talking about surplus funds, but we have budgeted this year and next year twenty thousand dollars for a line program. Uh, we won't use it this year, and we won't use it next year, uh, more than likely. So that, that would be a source right there. Uh, we, and so we just, even if we didn't get the supplemental grant, we can find the, the funding, and it's still, it would still be a great deal for, this is like, I don't know if you mentioned the total price, but it's a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar project to get this state of the art.
So Phillips is picking about half the cost. We like that.
Philip, can we complete the project and, uh, before we get notice on the second grant? Or do we have to wait till we get notice whether we get the addition?
I would not wait.
I know, that's, it sounds too critical that.
It is very critical.
Really we needed to move sooner.
I was hoping KDOT would be a little bit more favorable to our request, or for the city's request, rather. And, uh, but they still, I think it'll go through. I mean, I, you know, they've been favorable to us for a lot of, of projects, but they didn't have to, so.
But they would be understanding that we had a, an issue that we had to act before we got the notice on the grant, and then the money would come and replace.
Yes.
The funds.
Right. But same.
That's why I was concerned of us going ahead. I, I don't see that we want to postpone.
You don't want to do that. You don't want to do that.
No. Comfortable, no more questions?
Good.
Comfortable, no more questions?
You guys asked a lot, but thank you.
Okay, with that, then I'll call for a motion.
I authorize the mayor to sign an aviation dealer agreement with Phillips for ten years, which includes acceptance of a grant in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to help fund fuel farm upgrades pending city attorney approval.
I'll second.
I approve.
You've approved, all right.
You've already reviewed. Here we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Post. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is considering adopting a resolution to place a question on the ballot to increase the number of commissioners to be elected at large or by district. When we started talking about this in December, I thought that we would have some public forums to open up to allow some input from citizens. And I, I understand with the time to get it on the ballot for the next election, we're short. We have to get it to county clerk by September tenth. But, you know, I'm not comfortable at this time. I've had comments from citizens both ways. And I, I think it's something that this major, we should have some public forums to allow the citizens to come to us. It's not something that us three should sit here and make decision without having an opportunity for the citizens to speak to us. And us either respond or just sit and listen. So, you know, I, you know, we've had eight months and to just rush to get it in, you know, I'm not comfortable with going ahead with a resolution or a motion to go either way right now.
You know, I, I...
Commissioners.
I agree with what you said. We've operated this way for a good number of years. And then to feel like you're kind of put under the gun to come up with a, with a decision, I think we need to hear from the public, like you indicated. Have some open sessions so we can hear the pros and the cons, what the feeling is of the community. It's such an important step that we may or may not take, but it's too important to, to rest through in a matter of days. We need, we need input from the public at large and how they feel about this. Need to consider it, invent it properly before we even begin to entertain a notion to, to proceed with this. That's my thinking.
You know, with the city newsletter, we can get some articles of what the process would be. Let the people know how, what it would take to change. Let them consider it and then come back to us. You know, it would be nice to be able to say, hey, Gary, saw this on the agenda, what do you think? Or, hey, you know, we got a problem, or Louis. But, you know, I think we need to, to let the people speak to us, too.
I'm good with that. It feels, it does feel a little rushed to try to get it on this late in the game and have very little time to discuss it.
Now, we had talked about some public forums, and now that we're through the budget portion, we've got maybe some time to, to have some forums. And, you know, whether we have one here or, or go someplace else where people would want to meet with us, call a public meeting there. But, you know, get out and go to the people instead of the people coming to us.
I would like to move forward with that process, though, not, not let this sit for another year or something.
So, shall we look at our calendars for September for a public forum? See when you're going to be available, you'll be available?
It's okay by me.
That would be, that would be fine. As far as, and I've offered before, anytime you gentlemen want to sit down and, and have a work session to where we can have a chance to talk about our ideas, our feelings on a lot of things. I'm more than entertaining to have that as often or as many as needed as possible. That's really the only time that we can actually sit together and have an idea of what our thought process is, where we're heading, what we, what we feel about certain projects, certain ideas that come before the commission. And, and I'll throw that out there again, anytime you two are willing to want to sit down and have an open work session, you know, I'll make myself available anytime, anytime, any date that works for you two.
Sounds good.
So look at our, our time in September. Also, visit with some people and see if they would want us to go, go to them somewhere, a group. I heard at, at the league, there was, was a community that was doing a survey, and that's what they went, instead of scheduling it at their normal place, they went to where the people were. And they got a much better response, so. So if we're in agreement, then we'll just table this and bring back, next meeting, some locations and times we can meet. Okay?
Okay.
Next item, discussion regarding direction on City Hall and Public Safety Building. We're, of course, we're all, we all know where we are with phase one. We're looking at the enclosing and waterproofing improvements of existing City Hall. The next phase could be the interior renovation. That could be separate from the Public Safety Building. One of the things in the feasibility study and master plan, the square footage for one of the options of building where the apparatus bay was, it looks like their square footage was, was off by, I don't remember how many square feet.
I believe it, if I may...
It was twenty thousand?
Yeah, it was, it was, when they projected the cost, they projected it at a, at new construction, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-six square feet. And they didn't take into consideration the temporary apparatus bay that was already on site, which that increased the cost of that by ten, or ten thousand feet was the additional square footage that they incorporated into that plan. So it made that option somewhere in the vicinity of two million dollars plus higher. And that was something that, I sat on this steering committee, and we had a lot of figures thrown at us. And that one, it slipped by until I went back and did some double checking and looked at it. And then I found the discrepancies. So that was, that was not taking the, the temporary apparatus bay already on site. They went ahead and included that as, as another new construction on top of the, the Public Safety Building, if, if it was built on that site where the apparatus bay was.
I know we heard a report on the demolition. Are, is the demolition completed?
The drawings?
Demolition plan?
I think the last, we were waiting for...
Still waiting for the structural engineer.
Engineer.
Last communication I had from the architects was they were still waiting for a proposal from a structural engineer, but they had not yet received it. So we'll get that as soon as we get it. So that's what they're still waiting on.
They were working on, going ahead with working on the construction drawings.
Right.
But that was for the, the lintel replacement on the tuck pointing. So that's well established or on the way to being prepared for bidding. I think, was sometime in September when they thought they would have the, the documents ready to bid or, do you remember?
I'd have to look that up. I can't remember. But I, that sounds right.
Yeah, I don't remember. Maybe it was when we were at the site they were talking about.
I don't remember any dates given, just that they were still waiting on that structural. I'd say he said something verbally to you, like you said at the site.
It might have been when we were looking at the, some of the conditions there.
Amazing how long everything takes.
Yeah, yeah. And I think for their, their schedule, they've been moving ahead pretty, pretty good once they got going to get the data together for, for demolition. They stayed pretty good on schedule. So the, the thing we would, would look at, you know, there's, there's two options of going ahead with the renovation of City Hall, existing, original City Hall. And then the Public Safety Building, we're working out of Building D. So, you know, the space isn't that, that critical. We got the apparatus bay and that. And, you know, we could go ahead and market the sale of Building D with looking at, at some kind of agreement if it did sell to keep our two there while we're looking at the Public Safety option. One thing to go for the next phase of, second phase at Original City Hall is start at, at the program again, looking at the spaces that's there. I know there was some meeting room space that maybe could be, you know, for commission meeting room. If we're going to have this, do we really need a room up there and reanalyze what that next phase would actually entail, you know? And I don't know with, with, with Trainer, their experience with the feasibility master plan, the demolition, and, you know, with Andy and, and Vance, both, you know, they've, they've done a thorough job. The information that they've been giving us on their, on their reports, a lot of documentation, that it's verifiable. And I don't know if we want to look at, at a discussion with them for possible services on Phase Two, if we want to piggyback if there'd be any savings as an amendment. But that might be the next thing to start looking at, at some real numbers to know where we're going to be. Because the sixteen million is, is out of the question with the things we, we need. We've got to get our costs down. And, you know, with Coffeyville's Public Safety Building, a little over five million. And, you know, that's way more reasonable than what, what we've been talking about. We just got to keep our numbers down.
I mean, that's what we were wondering, Staff, you know, the next step. And the last time we really talked about it as a group, we talked about Phase Two, if you will, would be hiring an architect through a process, a bid process, proposal process for, one for City Hall and one for the Public Safety Building. Now, maybe we don't need to go Public Safety Building, but that's kind of, as I remember, talking about it. So I think the next phase of City Hall, which would be, to me, as far as an architect, would be to redesign the building, the interior and, and finish the project, at least in design. And put that, and that, put that proposal out for other architectural firms to, to give a proposal on.
I know with, with Trainer, there's some, some knowledge that the other firms would have to come up to speed from where he already has that. So, you know, I don't know how you feel about visiting with him. Just a, a meeting that Vance and Andy come in and we can talk and then make our decision.
I mean, that's what you put specs out for. I mean, that's what you put, you know, request for proposal or request for qualifications. I would recommend that, that, and RFQ to get qualifications. And if there are other firms, other firms, I, I mean, it, I can see going the way you're talking about as well, given the history. I'll just say I've had conversations with other architectural firms who would like to have a shot at it.
Yeah, I know. We've had some engineers that have looked at Original City Hall. They looked at Building D. And the information they gave us was totally wrong. And the information that Trainer's given us, you look at, at the documentation, it's there and it's believable. So, you know, it's always a gamble. But we can, you know, I think we need to look at the, the next phase, whether we go with requests for qualifications. And then, you know, we can review the, the firms. And we can always come back to, to Trainer.
Sure, they would be, they would give us a proposal.
I'm sure.
They would probably have a lot of inside information that would help them in their proposal. But I think it would be good to go in this next step to, to do that.
Process.
I, the, one of the worst ways to select a consultant is to look at cost.
Right.
Because of, the dollar amount doesn't dictate the quality. And you got to look at the, the performance. And that's what, you know, saying, we have, we've had consultants that their information has been wrong. And the cost is, costs us a lot of money. But they're, they're errors. So...
I don't have any complaints about Trainer at all. I, I would give them a glowing review. However, when we first interviewed them, it was to do this committee that we assembled and to guide the committee through this process of making a decision, you know, there or here. And so as far as I'm concerned, we didn't even really look at their qualifications as architects. We're really looking at their qualifications to run that, you know, that committee process. So I would be very strongly in favor of opening it up for an RFQ or, or whatever process to look at other options. I, I feel like we're just handing them a blank check almost otherwise.
Yeah. And I guess, I can see your concern. I've, I've seen their work and been around them in a different capacity, too. They've worked on state projects where I've worked next to them on other facilities. And, you know, I have that, which I'm comfortable with what you're saying, too.
They do great work, though.
Yeah.
Good to know.
So, you know, if commission wants to solicit requests for qualifications and then let them submit the project that they've already done...
Absolutely, yeah.
To review, but...
I think that's, I think that's a good way to proceed. The only contact I had with Trainer was being part of the group of the people on the steering committee. And we were basically given, this is what was given to us. And these were the options that were given. We, we narrowed it down to, to A and B. And A is the one that ended up getting a little more votes than, or not votes, but being more in favor of A than B, so.
And I think Andy mentioned they were working on the Wyandotte County or Olathe Municipal And I think Andy mentioned they were working on the Wyandotte County or late municipal building, but it'd be nice to have lists of projects that they've done to.
Yeah.
Reviews, so.
Specifically historical buildings.
Right.
Renovations such as this.
They've done projects at Pitt State, that's where I first came across them, and, so, okay, if the Commission leans that direction, then we could solicit requests for qualifications, advertise that, and.
That would be my vote.
I think that'd be a good, good direction for now, okay? So, you wanna prepare the RFQ and then get a, get us copies to look at? Okay, great. Okay, if we're, no further questions, comments on that, we'll move on. City reports, city minutes for the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, any questions there?
None.
Okay, next would be City Managers' comments?
I really didn't have any, except when I was driving around, I noticed Hecard has started paving, they got, on the south side here, short, short part of Charlotte Street's paved, and Second Street, I think it was, so they've started and.
Fifth Street, yesterday, I saw, too.
So, they're, they're in town getting that done, hope to do more next year.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Commissioners' comments?
You know, somebody approached me, we've got a, a building we own right behind us here, right behind Memorial Hall, the city owns it. I don't know why we purchased it, but somebody asked about leasing it, and we said we couldn't lease it 'cause it's not ADA compliant, so, somebody approached me and said, "Well, why didn't the building sell it? I'd be interested in buying it." I mean, why doesn't the city sell that building if we don't have any plans for it? And I had to say I have no clue what our plans were or are for that building, or.
I think when we purchased, when it came up available, we looked at the space on the block, and trying to secure the property to go with Memorial Hall. At, at one time, there was consideration of a developer wanting to do some work and tie it to Memorial Hall.
Yeah.
So, it was purchased in that, with that in mind, not as rental space.
Do you know about what timeframe?
It passed.
No, but I mean, was, were you on the commission when we purchased?
Yeah, we purchased it.
So, it hasn't been all that long ago?
Darrell was on the commission, maybe 2013 or 14?
I thought it was, it's one of the hotel developers, I think it was talked about, I, I thought Paul Sasse was City Manager.
Maybe talked about then, too, yeah, but, but that's what, and then we're looking at the, the access into the stage, the limit there of, of having some additional space for, for parking of the vehicles related to moving in and out of shows.
So, the plan was to probably bring it down?
Right.
And you, just so we have that space, though?
Right.
Has there been any further discussion about demolishing that building, or?
No, it was just stopped, 'cause, you know, when we bought it, and now we're required for ADA improvements, and that was the, the thing.
So, does it still make sense for the city to own it, or?
For, you know, it's up to the Commission's decision, but for use of space with Memorial Hall, it's beneficial there.
Okay.
But whether it's, you know, the, the issue of, of the city owning rental space competing against with public citizens, Kelly?
Actually, we had gotten notice recently that Studio Four's going, going to be leaving, and so that will be vacant, so I was gonna bring that back to you to see if you wanted to pursue with possibly removing that building. Of course, it'd have to go through the historical, and they would probably deny it, and you would have to override them, but, um.
When you look.
It's funny you brought that up now, so.
When we were looking at it, this, fortunately, they don't build things like they used to.
That's so true.
There, you look at some of the roof framing, it was an economically developed building.
And we had Sean Turner before we realized that Studio Four was leaving, go down there, I don't know if he's still here or not, but just because the way the sidewalk is and how steep it is, just the exterior ADA work, not including the interior, was, I think he estimated around fifty thousand plus. And then the bathroom's not ADA, there's a, a step, the doors are steps into that, so then you would have quite an extensive interior ADA, and that's just on the one side. I don't, I'm sure the Studio Four ramp doesn't meet the percentage slopes that it's supposed to. So, it would be very expensive to get that to ADA standards, plus the sidewalk and all that to, to match up with it, so, it's probably not cost-effective to put that in, but of course, that's your decision, and so we will be bringing that to you to get direction on what to do on that structure soon.
The person that leases Studio Four had, had indicated to me there was some issues with the building as far as water and, and other issues concerning with the building.
Well, it's a nineteen-hundred building, so it's an old building.
Sure.
And we have tried to be very respectful when she called and tried to get someone down there as soon as we could, and Rick's been really good to work with her. We put a new heat and air unit in about a year or so ago, and so we have tried to accommodate her as much as we could, but there's just so much you can do, you know, without, you know?
Well, like the mayor just said, I don't think we should be in the rental property business, I think we should either, if we're gonna bring it down, let's bring it down.
Yeah, and we didn't wanna suggest that, well, we had an active viable business there, but now that we know that they're leaving, this is the time to make a determination of what you wanna do.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, the only other thing that I haven't gotten clear in mind is why we were listed as being delinquent and paying our property taxes?
Quick, quick answer, there isn't one, there isn't one.
I'll take the quick answer, yeah.
Mike may, but, Mike, Mike might be able to help me, but, yeah, we saw the ad in the paper, the certain properties that had been listed as delinquent, and we've been doing a lot of research, trying to, first trying to track down exactly what properties they were. We knew right away there was two, at least two major ones on there that were tax exempt, listed them as tax exempt, so why they show it as unpaid, we're not sure, but Building D, for example, is one, and the Hugo with, that's covered under the bonds, the industrial bonds, and they're both tax exempt, obviously. But we've been tracking down the other property, and I sent out that email, I think you got that listed where we are now, and then Jeff and Mike are gonna meet with the assessor and/or the treasurer, both, it sounds like there's some communication issues between the, on what gets listed as delinquent and what's get, the treasurer lists as delinquent.
'Cause we've not seen this before, right? This is something that's just popped up.
Right, so it's, and I know, it, one of them goes back to a ways, I'm told, one of the newspapers is delving into it very deeply as well, and we're actually sharing some information.
Good.
Yes, I said, we're sharing some information, you know, so, the more, we, we just wanna get to the bottom of it, find out what, what properties we do, we do, oh, we, we're confident we owe taxes on at least two properties out at the airport, YAG, because we're in that rental, and maybe this other property right here that we're renting out, since we do it as for rental income, we would pay taxes on that. Other than that, if there's, Jeff can add anything, that's what we think we owe taxes on.
Okay.
The rest of them would be exempt, and they, and, and they may not be listed because maybe it'd be a process that we haven't gone through to get them determined as exempt by the county, by the county assessor, so we're working, working on that, see what we need to do to get that, get it all straightened out.
All right.
Anything that?
Thank you.
That's.
I haven't looked into it, you know, I ordered some title work, the title company delivered it, sent to the city staff, and they're working on it, and we're gonna get together. There's been a lot of turnover at some positions, and that's part of the issue, 'cause I don't know how a property that was previously listed as exempt, is, there was a reversal of that, and still shows up as exempt on the appraiser website, but you get a tax bill for it, there's really no explanation for that, so.
That brings up a question, we talked about city-owned property that's rented out, the property that the city purchased at one time to turn into a parking lot, that there was a church, and then there's a historic brick house, and that house is being rented out, is that through the Independence Housing Authority, or is that with the City of Independence?
I'm not sure, it's, April, it's through the Housing Authority?
I thought it was, but I wasn't sure.
April can answer the question, but.
But it goes as ownership.
Yeah, that would be a property.
Well, they can't have ownership, so.
I know, yeah.
City owns the property, the Housing Authority is managing it for the city. When the city originally purchased it, they asked if we would take over and manage that property for them. We do income qualify those tenants.
Okay.
So, it meets that requirement.
It's listed as exempt right now?
Correct, as it should be.
Yeah.
'Cause it meets those requirements that allows it to be exempt. So, yeah, that's what, we're managing it.
The city didn't go out looking to purchase that, that was actually, the city was approached by a church that acquired another property, and the church was gonna donate that to the city, thinking they might wanna use that for parking, and they did tear down the church that was there, hasn't been converted to parking yet, but I, I don't know if there's a plan to tear down the house, I doubt that seriously, but it was really a donated thing to the city. I think there was some money that changed hands, but it was very minimal, it wasn't related to what it was really worth.
No.
It's one of those, it was close to the Memorial Hall, we knew we had a parking issue, and sure, we'll take it, so, we took it.
Thanks, April. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Louis?
The only thing I wanted to pass on, on the southeast part of town, I had a couple of people, they were glad to see that we aggressively hit some of the tall weeds and grass lots, they were happy to see the mowers out there, and I know the guys have been working, chasing their tail, trying to get caught up with the amount of lots that we have, but the people in the neighborhood were appreciative that, that we finally got to it and, and got those lots mowed and cleaned, and they wanted me to pass that, pass that along to the, I believe it's the street department crews that are out doing that mowing, so they appreciate it, they understand that we have a lot of lots.
Pass that along, and we're still trying to catch up, we've got still lots of grass with this, especially with this rain, but the season's getting over with, so hopefully it'll slow down for the, for the environmental, we call environmental enforcements, but there's still a long list of places to mow.
That's all I had.
I don't have any comments. Next item would be the public concerns, do we receive any? If we had none, then, next item on the agenda is executive session for personal matters of non-elected personnel, and the motion, I, I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of employees' performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption, KSA seventy-five, forty-three nineteen, B one. The open meeting will resume at seven thirty-five, and it will be with the Commissioners. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We're back in session, and we'd like to go back to executive session for the, the same KSA exception that was quoted earlier, and go for twenty minutes, which would be.
Seven fifty-five.
Seven fifty-five, and Craig, like for you to come with us, and we're gonna take a quick restroom break.
Restroom.
Don't start the clock yet.
Yeah, let's make it, give us two minutes.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion, I need a second.
My second.
Gary seconded.
Gary seconded.
All in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We're back in session, like to make a motion that we extend for another ten minutes, what's it, five, what time is it?
Seven fifty-six.
So, eight oh six?
Can we call it a decent?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're back in session, and we have no action taken from executive session at this time. With that, the next item on our agenda is adjournment, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
ICC thirty-eight, House fifty-ten.
The final?
Thirty-four.